Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
We need to work on October 3, 2022. Let's say PM at the town hall. We have two, three adjustments to the agenda tonight. My fault. It's a tough week last week, as we all know. So I want to add six A to Capitol Budget Appointments. Six B, we need to send letters to all the candidates thanking them for their applications. And the final one is, again, the long-term lead is next, the next select committee, not this one. So that is basically set up. So that's okay. Any motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
amended.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, public? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Give you a second, Mitch.
Hold on, David, I'm coming.
Do you have a few? You got your own sentence?
Yep.
We have a few minutes to approve today. So the first one is the minutes of September 15. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as presented? If not, somebody make a motion to approve September 15 minutes.
And then you can press.
Okay. Just a second. Fifty seconds. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? The next is the 26. Let me show us. Yes, we agree. No, now it's a special about for me as well. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes of September 26, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? And the last final is the minutes of September 19. Are there any additions or corrections to those?
Remember that one. Did you have the special meeting?
No, no, that was the last training.
No, I don't think they were trying to.
If not, and also to accept the minutes of September 19 as presented?
A lift.
Second. If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Presentation from the BBCC?
That would be sevens, and I have not heard from them, and they're not here for presentation.
Okay. They requested to go on, I know. So, okay, so maybe they'll show up.
When Bill called, I asked him what it was. He said that's sevens, and they were supposed to be here for a presentation. That's all I know.
All right. Well, who? Hi, over the floor. Mike?
We are moved into ditching. It's kind of our primary thing at the moment. Winter stand is almost all in. We're going to be pulling that in as we get our spare time. Salt is the other conundrum. We actually have, it's been nothing that matters. And I've been months trying to get a price on salt, finding last week I got a price on salt, on price, which was 94.40 a ton, which is about $20 increase a ton from where we were last year. Really? Yeah.
Same provider?
We, well, we started with cargo last year. We were paying 73 a ton when we started the winter. And around January, February, Danny pulled some out of, from Appalachia, and they were at $92 a ton, I believe. There, that's where I got the price from, and they're the only person that gave me a price, and they're at 94.40 a ton. Cargo will not give me a price at this point. They keep telling me Monday, Monday. Well, I've been through three Mondays, and I haven't heard anything. So sooner or later, we need to put some salt in our shed.
And the quality of Appalachia was better than?
Generally, yes. It's a different type of salt, but it's usually much better. So my suggestion was, was maybe we put 150 ton into the shed from Appalachia and hope that cargo pun gets a cheaper price, and then we can start buying from there.
Sounds reasonable. You're good.
I mean, I think you have to start going.
I might have something there soon.
Yeah, I get you right.
Because my fear is that we're going to be in a long list of people waiting to get salt. Because I know I'm not the first one, because when the gentleman answers the phone, he just says, I don't have, I don't have an answer yet. So that kind of makes me nervous.
Instead of 94.40, Tim?
94.40, and I figured 150 ton, you know, that's only about six loads of salt. But that would give us a start in the winter, and hopefully we can get a cheaper price somewhere else, or it's cargo, it's the only other place. So that would be my suggestion.
So do they truck it, or do you have to book it?
They, no, they truck. They comes out of Rockchester, New York.
And that, that price includes the shipping?
Yeah, that's down to our, in our shed.
Does it have a motion on this?
I, that's, I don't know. I mean, I got the idea. We need salt and.
It's, it's in the minutes and the price, I think that's the issue.
And the budget, right? The budget, I mean, salt?
Well, we, we figure around 600 ton. So that's, that's our usual goal, is there. Instead of being able to cheaper, we'll, we'll do that. Okay?
Is the price determined by the amount we get?
It's usually distance, because of the distance after trucking. Trucking is what's really going to kill us with everything from everybody.
I mean, we could make a motion if we get a deal.
It's in the minutes. It might be four, so I think that's sufficient.
But there's no local salt?
Cargo is pretty much it. We're bare, and they have a depot over in Rocky Temple. They, I mean, we bought from them for years. As I said, they won't give a price at this point. And it's just, we might be on a long list of people when they finally do give a price. I know I'm not the only person asking.
I think so.
If they're not giving us a price, they're not giving anybody else a price. I know. I know the state filled all of their sheds, so the state isn't going to be standing there waiting for salt.
But did ever happen hotels get together and buy huge amounts of prices?
Not really. They used to do, like, if you, you could kind of get into a contract with them early in the year, but they haven't done that in five years. Now they're starting to meet competition. Said Appalachia has only been around for three years. It's kind of short period of time. American stuff needs to be in Claremont, but I don't think they really deal in thick volumes as much as they used to. They deal more in the contractors. You don't even have a phone, and they get a hold of it.
And what was the salt, again, Kim, that wasn't so great?
Cargo was not as good as.
They store it outside until it's full of water. Doesn't help.
See anything else?
That's pretty much it.
And you're all done with the hallway?
Hallway's done, yeah. We're, instead, we're ditching. We're going to be jumping around. We got some water just non-existent at this point. We do have three culverts we're going to replace. Getting Colby out there in the grader.
Colby, you do well.
He's doing very well.
Good.
And what about the situation with the beavers?
That's never ending, but I get to get a little stiff and see when he's going to go over there and march over. And that's a morning routine. I get to go over there and dig it out the back of. See what he's going to do. We need to get that done.
So you'll chat with them?
Yeah.
And thank you for doing that tree on the turner.
Oh, yes.
Which tree is that?
35. Oh, I.
Kim, are you going to talk about Sina or discuss the part of that?
Yeah, actually, there is, but we had gotten an email last Tuesday. Bill got this, and so did John and Michelle, and it was forward to me. But they are looking for a recovery, for a recovery transition meeting in order to transfer our case to the state for a closeout, so the 5% that we're waiting for. Probably the reason we haven't received that 5% is because they're waiting for the state closeout. And this will be like a 15, 20 minute meeting. There's a PIN number and all, if you access the portal and just go over, make sure all documents have been signed through FEMA, which Bill and I have done on the port, on their portal, on the grant website. And I don't know what other questions they're going to ask, but I'm hoping tomorrow to get together, maybe John will stop by. Bill said he's going to stop in tomorrow and hopefully address this and make an appointment to get on. They'd like to have this done by the end of October, as soon as possible. But otherwise, everything else has been signed. And that's all there is on that FEMA portion of it.
So this closeout meeting, is that FEMA? Do it in the net or face to face?
On the internet. It's a pen, and it's an actual, it'll be more of a virtual meeting. And they want one person from the team. So the team, I'm assuming, is Michelle, Bill, and John. So it'll probably be John and Bill that'll get on and just answer the few questions they have, make sure everything has been signed, and we can sign out on it, you know, 5%. And then we can be done with the July brainstorm of 2021.
And the stolen water mitigating grants? You said Bill wasn't coming in, but?
Bill was going to come in, but I've talked to him since, and I pretty much, this was, had to do with the Hankley Brook. There was two culverts on Hankley Brook, and there was one on Fisher Hill, right where the tar ends and made that he was going to try for these three grants. Well, come to find out, the, the grant is through the Fed, the cost is more than double because we have to actually do the engineering ourselves. It's also a three to four year out before we end, which means the price isn't even going to change. So not only is it going to be more expensive because of the engineering, but three or four years is played. It's, it's just, it's, he said it'd be cheaper for us to replace the structure through a grant plug at the time, when the time comes in three years, if one's available, then to go through this process. So he wants to just never mind.
This, this for him, Hankley Brook?
Two on Hankley Brook.
Yeah.
And then one on Fisher Hill.
Excuse me.
So.
Anybody have anything on highway? Mike, everybody? No? You have anything, Kim?
Yes, other than, I just want to let you know that all the light bulbs have been changed. Russell did three quarters of them, and the road crew finished the rest of them last week, so all of them have dusted dawn light bulbs in them. There is one that Johnny's pointed out that needs attention, not all that Russell did, but otherwise they've all been done. Everybody's aware that the ballots went out. So, you know, send your votes in. You can drop them in the lockbox. Or you can hand deliver them, you can hand deliver them the day of, or you can send them in the mail post each day. I guess at some point, I'll report the status on the town hall at another time. That's it.
Party?
Okay, I have put together a possible list for the Apple Budget Committee, which I will give you at first time, which would include myself, Kim Record, John Gregory, Cynthia Gibbs, Mike Faulkner, Colby Record, and Maureen Parker. That would be seven people. Any question?
So did Noel again? Yeah, did Noel again?
Last year we had five. No, a couple of years ago, we had seven or eight. Seven is nice, it's a hot number.
That was to him.
You want, did you get all the names?
No.
So you got myself, Kim Record, John Gregory, Cynthia Gibbs, Mike Faulkner, Colby Record, and Maureen Parker.
And I'd just like to ask a question about Colby. Is this part of his development plan? It's Mike, are you aware of this appointment?
It's not really part of his development plan, but I thought it would be nice to get some new blood on here that's young and in the equipment.
Mike, I just want to make sure you're his supervisor. I just wanted to make sure.
He lives here in town. It's a good thing to get involved in this knowledge of it. Especially can be an honor, pardon.
Has somebody wanted to make a motion to accept the committee recommendation?
Don't be too long.
Have a second?
Second.
We have any other discussion? Are you okay with that? You're happy with the committee?
I am.
All right, well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. When do you go to meet?
I haven't decided yet. I got to start pulling out the last year's stuff and updating the actuals where we are and what's happened in the past year as far as spending. I think we've got a new truck. I don't know whether we spend it. I got to get with Kim and get, you know, what's happened in the last audit as far as expenses. And that'll call a meeting after that. But I got a meet with Mike, get caught up on the equipment needs. I don't know who's going to be the lead person on our bridge. Obviously, I think that was Sudan last year. Are you still the lead person?
No, that would be either John or Rich.
Who's going to be this lead person?
I think John is going to lead.
John? That's, and I'm sure John will be the holder or something like that. Those are the main things. And I'll talk with, you know, the fire department and see if they know anything for us.
Yeah, we'll get a letter out to the Fire Department, Fast One, and Lime Bridge, so they can start getting their budgets going. Okay. Bill, do that, or get the money, answer that.
As far as the bridge thing, isn't it true that we're just going to pass information over? There's nothing really?
The letter did come in from the, from the state with revised plans or whatever, but I think it's an unfair, actually, committee should take a look at that for a moment and take a report back. Comment on the links below if you need. Okay, so the next item is, I guess, I don't think we need a motion, but we shouldn't be sending the letter to all the candidates thanking them for their participation in hiring processes. Is that what everybody thinks we should do?
Yeah, don't worry.
Can I hear that? You're applying?
Sure. Well.
Who else would that, that would be?
The challenge of that.
No, there's a.
There was someone.
Oh, you mean lawyer?
Yes, all the people.
Bill said there was somebody phone that had contacted him or by email that were just inquiring, but didn't actually, so he just thought maybe he should probably send something, but he wanted it directed from you, that he could go ahead and send something either verbally, email, or written to anybody who expressed any interest.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. These people did, and you never know what's going to, what the heat brings, and, you know, perhaps you might, you might need, you know, another application. You never know.
Yeah, I'm fine with it being used if they didn't apply. But I'm fine with doing that. But if they didn't actually apply, I don't know if I would bother by, if you feel good about it, I mean, I don't really, I'm not, I'm jacking to it.
There's a new request that say be written letters on our town stationary rather than the email.
Sure, definitely, I would do.
I would say at least to the one applicant that did apply and came in for an interview. The others, for instance, on Friday, someone did call me, didn't leave his name, and he had spoken just to Bill and asked about the position. And I told him it was filled and, you know, that we were going to move forward, but I'll have Will call. No, don't, don't bother then. So it was, that's an example of a contact that just had verbally talked to him.
So we need to close it out, basically, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what about for the highway? Did we do the same thing with people who inquired and?
I think we did.
Pre-virtually, but yes, we did. I guess.
Then we should close it.
Actually, somebody willing to motion that we do this, we do that, the latter end?
Oh, I'll be, I'm sorry.
Anthony, one second?
Yeah.
No other discussion? So the motion should read, Wendy, we're going to send a letter to the candidates on stationery, town stationery.
And they've been inquired and applied, right?
Yeah. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The Cemetery Committee, this, nothing really new. Mr. Jones has contacted, he was supposed to be, he was available. Last week ago, John and I were not available, but we are scheduled to meet with him sometime in October, and he will be back in town. So that's in the cemetery sits. Highway Committee?
What about the strategies to review and amend the cemetery?
Oh, we're working on that, that's not completed. Highway Committee? I don't think there was anything. Give you a little more.
Did everybody see that I did send out that we had gotten a new report from V Trans on the bridge?
No.
No? Okay. I sent it out today.
Oh, okay. I didn't say anything.
It's 118 pages of the final report.
I definitely.
And it came in on the 29th, last Thursday, to Bill. So I was checking emails and forwarded it to myself and then forwarded on to you. And they do want any comments filed from the town by October 31st. So you'll see that in the cover letter when you read your email.
That'll be on the agenda for the, for the next meeting.
With some new dates and a few new figures.
Yeah.
That email did not come through. I wonder if it's an attachment that's to the, I'll try to say it again. And that is going, the review of that's going to be the responsibility of the Highway Committee, is that right?
Well, the Highway Committee will look at it, I'm assuming, between now and the next meeting, and then will present it at the meeting to.
For comment, yeah.
And the final report.
So you said comments from Tom, and we're not at the point that we're going to have?
Yes, you do. You're going to have the actual engineering drawings.
Right, right. So are we going to try to get a public meeting before? Because it's going to have to be done quickly.
Why would we want?
There's no public meeting. It's, I mean, we, we did that to.
So as you said, comments from Tom, you're just talking about the board?
Just. Yeah, they said the town, the comments the town may have by October, meaning the select board.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't looked at the report. Maybe you don't like the color of the guardrail, or there's something you don't like that you can ask them to change. They might not.
So who's really going to have that much input?
They are pushing out the dates, what, far?
What about the line?
No, that, that there's going on.
Well, I think that's, the public needs to know that.
So.
At the next meeting, when it's presented.
So I can, I mean, I can read what they said, the little verbiage. It just says, we would appreciate any comments the town may have by October 31st. The next step in our process is to advertise the project for construction. Due to state budget constraints and fabrication, lead times to procure, procure structural steel for the project, the advertising date is being pushed from November 9, 2022 to May 3, 2023. Construction will be scheduled to begin mid-July of 2023 and complete on November 8, 2024. Please note the contractor's contract requirements will not allow partial demolition of the existing superstructure during 2023, thus not reducing the bridge to one lane over winter. Recent labor force and inflationary concerns providing additional time to construct the project may bring more competitive bids. This bridge is within the town's maintenance responsibility, therefore, the funding for this project would be from federal, state, and local sources. The funding split for this project is 80% federal, 10% state, 10% town. The current construction cost estimate is $5,900,000, including construction engineering and contingencies. Our current preliminary engineering and right way cost estimates total $1,040,000, of which we have spent $858,878.97 from overall project total cost of $6,940,000.
Just to put it on my, their estimates.
These are estimates.
Their estimates.
And we're looking at another two or three years.
Yeah. All right, so landing on time in highway. Parks, nothing. We haven't, they're going to come give us a presentation on the next board meeting. Personnel? Buildings grounds, a buildings committee reports. Do you want to?
Yeah. Process is running along. It's, if anybody's been in the office, it's extremely loud and dusty. Very. They are sheet rocking tomorrow. They just went and got all the sheet rock. So sheet rocking and muddying tomorrow. They're waiting until Wednesday to actually sand on the sheet rock, which is going to be even worse. But there should be little to no traffic in the office on Wednesdays, other than, no, I don't think Bill's going to be there. The listers are staying out. We're going to try to open as many doors shut as we possibly can. Once they finish the sanding, they're going to paint the lobby. So the lobby will get painted and down the hall and the ceiling. They said the next step after that will be the flooring, and they'll come in with three options for flooring, and we're going to pick one of the three, and they'll put the flooring down.
What color is, pardon, what are they painting?
All I told them for color was, I don't want sparkling white, but I don't want bright and kind of like an off-white color, something that'll look clean and crisp and match whatever. Our offices are all a green, a really nice item, and our floor, floor screen, not really too particular, and then I'd like it to look nice and clean. They did say that the shaft, they're hoping, the elevator shaft actually will be here the first couple of weeks of November. And that's about it so far. And then put the office back together again with the heat pumps.
And they do the sanding, and they put plastic over the doors and stuff?
They're supposed to, they want to put a piece of plastic that extends from where the closet was and where Bill's door is right across. So it's just an open way, since no one's going to be going to the listers anyways. It'll just be my door and Bill's door, but they'll be shut and cover the copier.
When? So they're not going to be doing anything with the bathroom for ADA?
No. And they're going to come up in sheet rock, and they'll re-biscuit sheet rock, too, because this is the height of the walls here.
Bill had told me over the summer that where the heat pumps are, that, can't think of his fellow's name now.
Mike is supposed to do some sort of.
My understanding was, if we do get ice coming from that, that's going to shed that. If not, it may hit them.
Right, exactly.
And do some damage. Hopefully, we're not going to get ice and snow anytime soon, but.
So you want me to call Mike?
Bill said he was on the schedule, and he's going to do it before the snow flies. That's the last I heard about it.
Okay, I'll remind Bill tomorrow to call Mike and, and fill that.
No, we should probably do something temporary, something. If a D, we're worried about damage, no?
Yeah. I know the, Brian, who installed it, was concerned about it getting ripped off.
No.
Yeah.
Will you make a list, to-do list for building, for the building needs?
We talked about it.
Talked about it.
It didn't really.
You spoke to Bill, I think. He's kind of looked at that.
Yeah.
How you manage it?
You can.
Especially with budget incoming up.
Yeah.
And possible the capital budget and start setting some money aside.
Could be some information that I think about about my estate stuff, did we?
Yeah.
Stairs. I think that was probably the number one.
I think that was our number one too, and yeah, carpeting and, you know, all these things that.
All right.
And Kim, uh, in terms of the election being held on November eighth, and that elevator shaft going in the first couple of weeks of November, how is that gonna?
Uh, they were warned in the contract that November eighth was out of the question for any type of work.
Right.
So they're totally aware that everything ceases for the November eighth. And if it's not up and working, I'll do like I normally have and just have a signage downstairs, and I'll just go down and meet whomever can't make it up.
Right, thank you.
Anything else that we do?
So, um, Rich on that list, we could get the guys.
Yeah, okay, it's off there.
Yeah, Michelle.
All right, I'll, I get some notes also, I'll put together, I'll probably do them.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, wastewater, um, they, we had to meet here on the twenty eighth. We have pretty good showing, I thought.
Yeah.
Um. Kim, I'm, um, kind of like gave a, I think, very much a presentation, there were a hundred questions. Um, and I guess, you know, I guess she'll come back with some, some feedback, um, chalk. But it was, it was a process that started, it was, it was quite an interest. What would you say of this?
Uh, I think there's about forty, between thirty and forty people, so it was, it was a good turnout. Um, it is on her presentation, the PowerPoint's on our website. Uh, and it's also been emailed, I think, to the whole town circulation emails that we have, um, the whole PowerPoint that she had. And I think they're due back every eight weeks, I think it is. The eight weeks there.
Well, the next, the next is sixty percent, so I don't know when that's gonna be.
Yeah, because they're behind, they're not behind schedule right now.
They're probably, be, be waiting for me after Christmas, I would say January.
They probably did, I don't remember that saying it. A timeline. They may have, but I won't call.
I don't remember.
I think they were, they plan on being done, um, so whether or not there will be a vote at town meeting time.
Oh, I don't think so, there's not been done at town.
I think she said by the first of the, of the year.
They're actually.
Oh, did it?
I'm pretty sure she had it.
I'll check with her.
I wasn't going to be there, I was just wondering if the select board members who attended the public comments, portion of the meeting could just share your take on what the public is thinking about this project, if it's not a thirty percent. Who, if, if, you know, if you participated, what is your take on that? What about the comment section?
One, I did it personally, by, by the way, uh, I don't know who. Someone had mentioned, but who's got the last say in this or vote on it, just a slight point. Don't know who it was, I, I. I, my sense is that question will be asked a lot.
Yeah, it's a non-resident person that will make sure that they vote.
Yeah.
And because it's gonna, it's gonna be impacting them as taxpayers, um. But the bottom line was, it's up to the select board to do a vote. But then again, non-residents don't have the option to vote.
Yeah.
Of that.
Well, we finally had to do this, yeah, so the whole process has to go through town vote.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
But I understand that, and it's not being taken away. He had a valid question about his input and vote as a non-resident.
Yeah, it's a non-resident.
And, and Phil's response was that at the town meeting, if the local voters said yes to that, then they would be allowed to. But it would be brought up as a motion, I guess you call it, at the town meeting. And then depending on the outcome, thus, they either do or they're not approved.
Well, what, what would actually have to happen is that, um, there would have to be a petition.
Petition, yeah.
Up at the. Yeah, and then prior to town meeting, there would have to be a petition with twenty-five percent of the legal voters. Um, and then that, and then that one has to be brought to a special town meeting to allow for a special vote at town meeting, because you can't, you can't do a special Australian ballot at the same meeting, so it has to be one before and then do it if it does pass. Um, my question is, and we have to look into it, is can a non-registered voter file a petition to the select board?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be one of the only questions there as to whether. And then, then Bill brought up another point when he stopped in the office, that if, if non-residents are allowed, um, then we could possibly have to form a district. Uh, Erin made it sound as though she wasn't aware of the entire campaign for the project. She thought might be just the village that's supposed to typically. So we need to clarify that, goes that if that's the case, and if you're gonna allow just the village, then you have to have a separate vote for just the village, which means then you have to create a separate district. So we're getting very complicated now.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's gonna be a clear-cut, common town meeting.
No, I, I, I don't believe that you're going to have a vote.
There, there's a lot of things that are in play right now, that's coming up and questions that we have to research. And my other question was just as myself too, is during the meeting, they proposed different plans. Who actually picks the actual plans? Is it the select board that picks a particular plan? And then we vote on that one panel, or is, say, there's three of them, do all three before you're the town to pick a plan?
I think that the, when you, you're referring to the type of.
The type, or the locations and things like.
Talking to Taiwan, a lot of that would just dictate what, what we can do and what we can't do.
Yeah.
It will not, you will not have a choi, you might have a choice, but you might not. You might have to only go to the one type of system.
Depending on location.
Depending on location, depending on what works and, and, and the cost, because each one of these things has a different cost.
Right.
You know, so, uh, you know, but I, I, I just don't, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Don, if you heard, but I can't imagine as they go and being ready to vote at this town meeting.
They'd say that, that they would be done by January, but I think there's a lot of other questions outside of what they're gonna be done.
Yeah.
And.
I, I, I'll, I'll get a hold of her and get this clarified, because, because the timeline was never to, to do it this year with August and March.
She said the sixty percent report would be done in January, but there's nothing about.
That's exactly what I was. Yeah, but not the whole project of the whole.
That's, that's.
That's what I would want to do, and that's what, but I, I don't wanna speak out of turn until I can confirm that, but that was the original. Um, that she had said that she would be back in January with the sixty percent, and then we know a lot more about it.
Also, the one thing she mentioned to the small group that they were talking after the meeting had ended, there are some particular questions that we had that she couldn't answer. And anything outside of the engineering portion of it that came into like a district and who votes, um, uh, who pays for it? Those are more municipal questions, she said that she couldn't answer, but she wanted them in writing. So if she could get them emailed in writing, then that would then prompt them to be able to research. But without that, so it sounded like they needed to come from the select board these questions for them to prompt a research.
So that would come from the wastewater committee, right? That, that's who would have that responsibility?
I, I don't know, I, I, it might be, it could be, it also could be the responsibility of the feds or the state. Because there's federal money, state money involved, and I don't know, uh, I, I, I think it. I just don't know, I think, you know, we're just gonna have to, um, have a conversation with her and figure out which, what's going on, and I'll get back to you.
So the meeting was recorded?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have all those questions?
Yeah.
I think I'll put the PowerPoint. Only the, yeah, just the PowerPoint.
And then some. I want to maybe which reporter?
Um, Bill did it through Microsoft, but it's not one that he can distribute the way the program is made up, so yeah, he can look and see what some of the questions.
Well, we can go back and, and view the question.
It's definitely.
Now, as far as the questions go, maybe I misunderstood it, they're looking for questions from townspeople and us. Should we do something like? Put a request to the avenues to say, you know, forward your questions to the select board, we'll compile it, then we'll move it over to Taiwan?
Well.
Something along that.
She, she took down all the questions that she needed to for the engineering part of it, so she was writing those downs. It was just the, the particular ones that had to do with the municipality that we questioned, that she said she would like to see those more in writing, uh, at this point, because they're gonna come back again. Um, and, and it's open to the public to be able to come and answer questions.
So Kim, it sounds like what you're saying is that the questions that had to be processed associated with the town vote, and what leads up to the town vote, are the questions that are, what she says are municipal questions.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Erin and I'll get, I'll get a bit of that.
I also wrote down pretty much everything that was said, so I'm happy to make a list of the questions and send them to you. Um, she also handed out her email address, and I know you, I know some of you have gotten at least one email from someone about this. I mean, I know, I know that someone has sent an email to her already, and I think you got it and Bill did, um, about the location of the. Evening. And, and back to your comments, Suzanne, most of the discussion was more on location.
Ah.
And that was, that was a very hot topic that evening, I mean, there was other questions, but there was a lot of discussion on location and the history of some of the.
Better.
Some of the steps, some of the spots. We went over a lot of history of it and all of that, so, but that was primarily what it was.
I guess my take was said, well-attended, for the folks that did come, and a lot of nice questions. And, uh, about Taiwan, and then asking them, um. What was your take on the comments, Jen?
Excuse me?
What was your take on the comments?
Well, basically, I, I, I didn't stay with all of them, I stayed for all about ten fifteen minutes, and I didn't hope, so I didn't hear all of them, but the ones where, the, the questions that I heard, they were asking about the type of systems and, 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 you know, locations and things like that, and I don't know on that, but I do.
Pretty, pretty much that's what it continued on, and then, um, we were able, there was a lot of townspeople that could give feedback on the history of the properties that they were looking at, and she was making notes of that and gonna check into it.
Okay.
So to be honest, and the people that were here, unfortunately, like I said, I was late, I barely made it home, but, uh, the people that were here, what was your sense, were they people from the, what we're calling the district now, or were they elk flyers, or?
I'd say fifty.
She has a list of the people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty, fifty. Fifty from outside the town, in, in the village, and then fifty from in. It was more of a mix than I thought it would be.
Yeah.
It was.
There was a sign-in list?
Yes.
She got Eric, you know, distributing that? It's a public document.
Aaron has it.
Okay, but it would be a public document.
I wouldn't see why Aaron would shop, sure, Aaron.
Yeah, okay, I should have still confirmed it as such with Aaron.
That's.
No, all of them.
Okay, if you would kindly ask her to, I think we should just have the water, the wastewater committee people communicating there, and otherwise, she's gonna get a lot of.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'll take care of that, absolutely.
So that's the sign-ins.
I didn't sign it, but I, but I think, but I mean, it's, it went around, and I know everybody that's signed it, I think you were here, Sam, recently, right?
Yeah, 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 we signed, with the name and, and address.
Yeah, they're up there.
Right, yeah. So she has all the contact information that she can send anything to, that's, that's what she wanted, the more, she wants the more input that they can, that anybody can give, she wants.
Yeah, so, so am I now understanding correctly that it would not be appropriate for an individual to send them a question?
No, no, you're welcome.
Okay, yeah, that's on the access line.
Oh, oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
No, 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 you're welcome, that's your personal.
Yeah, 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 okay.
No, no, you got it.
For sure, sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
So, were you, do you have anything that you wanna share, part of the audience?
Well, one question that I do remember was asked, whether it would be possible just to look at the drinking water and not wastewater. But I think Erin's answer was that that would really only solve one problem of the, of the basically three main challenges that we have. And so that did not appear to be an option.
But, but they, but as I understand it, that has not been ruled out yet, that they're, they were pursuing both. But like Lisa said, the, it, it, it wouldn't, it would be better to go for the wastewater and not go for the drinking water. There is reasons that. She indicated it, and, and will indicate in the future.
Sounds like it was right, meaning, did the group come down on one, on the side of one location or the other, just in discussion in general about location?
Did they come down?
Um, did they agree, or was there a discussion about both? Are there just two locations, right?
Yeah, just the two, not the three.
Yeah. That they.
But they, they couldn't give a whole lot of discussion on the second one, because they haven't done a study on it, they just, they're just familiar with it, but my study's been done, so they couldn't give a detail on any of it.
Quite frankly, at this point in time, I don't even know if either of them worked.
Right.
Yeah, so that, so that, that's, that's, that's preliminary, right, and then they have to go further to see whether or not any of them.
Very interesting, right, okay.
Hmm, that what I thought too, was, which I didn't realize, the, the system that SKT's got down there, a lot of talk in town, well, I can just put eight of them, and she pretty much shot that down. And those systems wouldn't be reasonable for our, because there's just too many homes involved.
But she wasn't able to answer too, though, when she says too many homes involved, they're counting everybody out here too, within, which, when you look at the Thai, old Thai line lap with the overlaps, there's a lot out here that are not overlapping.
Exactly, that's.
So that's where she said, oh, well then, you know, she misunderstood, I mean, if you, if you took those out of the equation, for these guys.
Yeah, you just have to set it up into four or five.
I think you have to just bear in mind that this is the beginning.
Sure.
And there's a, there's a lot of information that she needs to, to go and to draw conclusions after the thirty percent, I wouldn't do that, let's see what happens later on.
No, we're gonna waste the dough, that's for sure.
Anything else on the wastewater, you're saying? Yeah, a quick question, maybe I went over my head, is, how much maintenance does this guy take a full-time person to maintain this? I, I had no idea.
Water system, it is.
Well, water system, yes, but it, but there are different systems that she presented, so I guess it depends on which one. I, I think, Sam, that, that question should come up at the next meeting, because I don't think, we, we know what system she wants to do or, or do a hybrid of. But I know definitely, because I, I've talked to her personally about it, if you go with a water system, you have to have a full-time manager, you've gotta have testing, it's a very complicated process.
And you don't have the license to.
Yeah, that isn't all it's.
Then people gotta pay for it.
Anything else?
I mean.
Is there any other business?
So, Joe, Kathy may know more about this than I, but on Sunday, there was a rescue call that, uh, an ambulance was not able to be dispatched to, and I think this is a.
Who's it?
Our, our Golden Cross ambulance was unable to be dispatched, neither was Rescue Week, and there wasn't an ambulance available from Chester either. Um, so this is something that I think we should add to the agenda for a future meeting, perhaps the seventeen agenda's getting a little old, but uh, perhaps the next one, because I believe, if my memory serves, Kim, our Golden Cross contract is seven hundred fifty dollars a month.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, seven thousand a year, isn't that what I got?
Not, I think it's nine.
But I understand why they can't come.
So this is why I was suggesting we put it on the agenda, that either Keith or Meese could come and speak to us if there is. and speak to us if there is a concern. You may be familiar with the Golden Cross and Ralabro Select Board are in discussions, shall I say. And I think we just need to make sure the Golden Cross is going to start grafting.
Okay, I'm not affiliated no more, but that being said, Keith can answer the question on the platform. I'm not going to ask you the details, but was it a call that needed immediate?
I don't know any of that.
Because I would think Mutual Aid would have found it, with that Springfield down there, or whatever that, you name it. I mean, I think it kind of, I don't know anything about it so far.
So we don't, so that, that's not speculating.
Yeah, yeah. And if Keith, if Keith says it's a non-issue as rich surmises, that's fine. I just thought I'd bring it up, because we have such a large contract with Golden Cross and ambulance service charge.
Yes, I know Mutual Aid, they're pretty good. If there was something that they would have found somebody, I would, I would, but, you know, up, you know, the side of the road with a drunk waiting for a state policeman would show up, hey, that's all. You know, that's what that is.
I would, I would talk to Keith and see if he was.
That's super, thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, um, when do you want us to set some dates for budget processing and invite?
Next meeting?
Do, do you want the October 7th to invite the library and the fire department, or you want to wait till November 7th?
No, let's wait till November 7th.
November 7th.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get the dates down for the next meeting, and then we'll get the letters out prior to this week.
Okay.
And have them, and then we can get them all, and make them come and look at it.
So November 7th for the invite, and then we can take it from there for the rest of our meetings.
Sure.
Do we have rescue come on the same time as five?
It would be nice, I think, if we had rescue, fire, and library. I think those are our three main ones that we like to hear.
So they won't talk about it on Saturday?
Uh, yeah, I think November 7th.
During the day or night?
During our regular select order.
But you want to do it during the evening, okay.
I think that would be good, definitely.
Yeah. Any others? What comment? Go ahead.
Um, regarding the traffic ordinance hearing, refresh my memory, if a member of the public wants to send some input in advance, is that appropriate and what do we do? Or do we show them at the hearing with our input?
Well, actually, I think Bill stopped in, and he said that this actual changing of the ordinance can be done just with a board and not a public hearing. So.
If we were, we were going to have a forum of, so.
The public can have input to the select board, but it does not have to be a public hearing. It, the formality of a public hearing does not have to happen to adopt the ordinance.
But we'd send on the schedule anyway.
Right, not yet, no.
Oh, I thought it was scheduled for November 7th.
Yes, it has been.
Yeah.
Or the select board or the public. The public hearing.
For a public hearing tied to the select.
So, so that's, so, okay, so you, you're, if you want to make a comment, I would send it now?
So, yeah, send a comment to the select board?
Yes.
Okay.
Well?
I want to go back and talk a little bit more about the short-term rental that we started to talk about at the last meeting. My sense was that because the thought, because the state legislature had not acted, that you were not empowered to do anything. But the more I thought about it, the more I realized that they didn't act, that empowers you to act. And it turns out that there is in fact a law that allows you to do just that. Because Chester is already working on such a, an ordinance, everyone else has spent an interesting afternoon with their zoning folks, and I have copies that I thought any of you guys would like to have to mull over and consider in the future for Grafton. Everything that happens in Chester, of course, does not apply to, to this, has to be kind of tailor-made to the, to the, to the town that actually exists. There's an interesting article in today's Chester Telegraph about, and most of the article was about the lack of affordable housing, but it also talks about this very issue. And it's very interesting to see how they're, they're beginning to realize more and more and more houses are owned by outside adults who don't live here, but in fact, in a lot of cases, by corporations that are just doing it for the rental income. Now, all that they're doing in Chester, and all I think you need to do to start, is register. And it would require an ordinance that says you have to register as a short-term rental facility. There's a cost involved. In Chester, it's $300 a year, and then your license. And more importantly, we have to find out, or you have to find out, um, who it is who actually owns the property. It doesn't, if someone's making too much noise, it doesn't do any good to call them, give them a ticket saying you're making too much noise. You have to go to the owner, and then the owner has to go to court and either dispute it or settle it. I am told that here in Grafton, we already have a settlement for issuing tickets.
Yes.
So that's not a major issue. Um, they have a police department, but of course, we don't. So there's lots of things to be considered as you go along. So you say to yourself, well, how are we going to find out all this stuff? And what they did in Chester is pretty interesting at the, they hired a data mining company, something I hadn't really thought about before. And this data mining company surveys the internet and looks at all the ads that are being posted and identifies them as being in Grafton, and therefore has a pretty good idea of how many there are and how much, um, attention therefore we should share. Chester finally figured out that they have 8% of their bogs, so to say, that are short-term rental, more than they thought. Um, I would be suspecting that ours is even higher than that, much higher than that. I have no personal complaint. There's an Airbnb or whatever you call it, they call them STRs, short-term rentals. So I'll use that term. There's an STR at the road from me, and except for Friday afternoon when they arrive, and Sunday morning when they leave, and the cleaning lady racing up right after they leave, that's the only impact it has, so no noise, no effort. They're pretty much self-contained, but that's not always the case. A lot of times, people rent these for parties, so they bring in, oh, and one of the things that is part of the ordinance is that it restricts the number of people you can rent to. It simply says you're allowed two people for each bedroom, and then two more on top of that. So a four-bedroom house would be allowed to have 10 over that rentage, and that's it. So if you're going to have a big party and invite 20 people, that's against the rules. You get a ticket, and you have to go to court to settle it. There's also the possibility, and you may consider this on a number of levels, of passing a 1% sales ordinance here in town. Lots of towns are doing that now, um, in order to gain some personal local revenues from all this that's coming on around. We know that when you do it online and you, you hook through Airbnb or VRBO or one of those, they collect the taxes and submit them to the appropriate board, but there's no local tax here that's enforceable, and I don't think we've ever seen a nickel out of it or anything like that. So it seems to me there's a search of revenue here that might not be able to.
Why don't we do that? This is a, this is not something that we could discuss tonight.
I agree.
Why don't you give us all the information you have?
Yep.
Drop it off at the, to the bill.
It's right here. You don't have to take it home.
Okay, take, let me take it home, and let, let's, let's, let the board see what we can do, because I, I, I I would agree with you that we need to do something.
Yeah, it's very, very.
So let's, let's see what we can do, and let's implement some of it, and see how it can be done.
Yeah, the, the real question that they found in Chester was, it's, it's, it's not can you do it? It's do you want to do it? And I, I posed that question to you as well.
Well, I can't speak with the board, but I mean, I, I certainly, I certainly would like to look into it, because I think it is, it is a problem, and it can become a problem. So, well, it's something that we can all discuss.
I'm just wondering if this would be a good project for Morgan to take on as a new person coming in, because it is going to have, uh, belong, it is going to have some longevity till we reach a decision. I'm not saying it would be drawn out, I'm just saying that it might be a good project for her to take on on the start.
I, I think that part of, would be part of her job, and I think right now, I think she needs to.
Get it on the ground?
Get it under the ground, I don't worry about that as we go. Obviously, this will be something that she will be working on.
Don, in Chester, did they have anything about these short-term rentals in terms of safety issues with fire?
Yeah, they.
Protection, if somebody go in and really love.
Yeah, you can put it in here, you can read it, you can take it home, but they, they include a million-dollar liability, I believe. Um, there is an issue about people using fireplaces and listos who aren't used to doing so within the town or in the city, and so there's a tendency to, um, force the owner of the house to fully list out what the requirements of the house are. And then it even includes local numbers, which many of them don't, and even the trash. We talked about this the other morning. What do you do with the trash when you're finished with a short-term rental? Well, in, in Chester, they were leaving it on the porch. Great, so now we got bears and rats and all kinds of things coming into town, because the short-term rental people don't know. It's not that they're, they're doing something terrible, it's just they don't know. So there's a list of the things that the owner has to provide to the short-term rentals. To my mind, it's just common sense. I mean, I use short-term rentals all the time. In Georgia, it's a state requirement that you have a license. I do it in Florida quite often, and it's pretty, pretty careful. You have to have certain things in the house, certain smoke detectors, certain, um, fire extinguishers, first aid kits, certain things have to be available, um, and it's all listed out, and, and it's, I remember, there's many farther steps you can take, but all we're saying at the moment, or all this is saying at the moment, is register and apply these very straightforward, simple-minded things, simple-minded things. You know, sorry. Simple-minded applies to a lot of.
This is, this is a very important, important thing, and, and pass this thing out to, to whoever, and and we will put it on the agenda.
We just have a copy of that in our mailboxes somehow, I'll let you.
Yeah, I can give it to you now.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything else?
And may I just add to that, this also came up in the wastewater meeting, because this ties directly into the wastewater question. When a single-family house, house has six vehicles parked by over the weekend, you can be sure that there's a lot more usage of the facilities than a normal single-family home would have. And, and, and this is definitely, as far as the village, I think, a, a real concern. Looking at the, the heavy utilization of single-family homes for multiple, multiple renters. And so I think that this has to direct well to our wastewater situation.
Agreed.
And, and, and we need to keep an eye on that.
And I, I did bring that, I did bring that, um, up to Aaron in my last meetings, that the usage goes up these, these, because house that you mind taking for weekends or weeks on end is being used all the time, and you don't know how many people are going to be in there. So regularly, if somebody else has two families, you have four people in the family, all of a sudden, I have eight, nine, and 10 in the same house, since obviously the usage goes up for everything. Whatever, and something needed to discuss.
Yeah. Don, thank you for that information. It's great.
Thank you, anyway. So you have any more to add?
Thank you.
All there you say are. You got it, and then we can go.